Committee of the whole meeting of Monday, November 6th to order. Deputy Clerk Malone, please call the floor.
Director.
Here.
Beremis, absent. Hill.
Here.
Chenko.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Bram.
Here.
Cahill.
Here.
Toledo.
Here.
Park.
Here.
Nudira.
Here.
Piscito.
Here.
Nardini.
Here.
Brennan.
Present.
Erby.
Here.
Thirteen present, one absent.
Thirteen present, one absent, we have a quorum. Is there anyone that has signed up for public comment in this committee of the whole meeting, Clerk Malone? Is there anyone in the audience who wanted to make public comment at this meeting that didn't have an opportunity to sign in? Please raise your hand. Seeing that, we'll move on to the business before the committee. We are here for the review of the fiscal year 2024 budget. We'll have some introductory remarks by Assistant City Manager Kopp, and I will have some. I will tell everyone here that we believe in steep tradition, which means when 10 o'clock rolls around, we won't be here. So unless we're just finishing something up, and I apologize to all the people who are here, we had a lot on the agenda tonight, as you may have seen, so we'll move through it as quickly as we may. Assistant City Manager Kopp, please proceed.
Yeah, thank you. First, I, Assistant City Manager Obrowski sends his apologies for not being able to make it tonight, so I will step in here and hopefully cover his thoughts. So tonight, I'd like to present the fiscal year 2024 budget and begin the city council review for the budget detail. The budget is the municipality's operational plan for the next year and for Elmhurst and outlook for two years. The budget is organized in the following manner. The budget summary has a transmittal letter from the city manager along with fund descriptions, revenue and expenditure by fund, and a budget overview of the operating departments for the city. The following sections have the line item detail of the proposed budget for 2024 with the projections for 2025 by fund. It also has the justification forms identifying budget details for all items that are in excess of 5% or more than $2,500 over the previous year's budget. At the beginning of 2023, the city implemented the new citywide ERP. This included updating the city's chart of accounts to align with the new system requirements. In most cases, the budget will look and feel very similar. The fund names, department names, and account names remain the same in most cases. The city did take the opportunity to adjust the chart of accounts where shifts in operations made sense to update the chart. A couple of examples are the communication functions were divided across many different budget line items in the past. A new communications and marketing division was created to centralize these costs in one place. Also, the municipal utility fund had six divisions, were reduced to three divisions to highlight the three main cost centers of the fund: water, sanitary sewer, and water reclamation facility. The 2024 budget consists of 24 different funds. A balance must be struck each year between the cost of providing these services and the available revenues. To prioritize services and projects, the city regularly conducts a citizen survey and relies upon its treaty planning goal-setting process. In order to provide context with which to prepare the 2024 budget, the city undertook a citizen survey in 2022 and updated the treaty plan in 2023. The citizen survey looks at city services, city government service, and city communications. The results of the survey found that 98.1% of the respondents rate the city as a good or excellent place to live. The city is providing excellent public safety, fire, emergency, medical, refuse, and recycling services. The survey cited neighborhood street maintenance and repair, and stormwater management areas for improvement. For a customer service perspective, most respondents who contacted the city were satisfied with the customer service they received, noting that staff was knowledgeable, courteous, and responded in a timely manner. Overall, respondents were satisfied with the city's communications with residents, citing the front porch as still one of their main sources of information. The city adopted a new strategic plan in 2023. Five strategic priorities were identified. The executive summary of the treaty plan follows the transmittal letter in the budget. The department summaries, goals, and objectives included in the budget align with these strategic plan priorities. Sound financial management, traffic flow, stormwater management, maximization of city assets, and various other planning activities were hallmarks of the treaty's long-term and short-term goals. The city council and city staff will continue to operationalize the strategic plan in 2024. The city begins its budget process by distributing the five-year capital expenditure budget. The KEB is a capital planning process projecting capital projects over a five-year program. The city then overlays the first two years of the KEB projects into the operating budget. The KEB has a separate transmittal letter, which can be found on page six in the KEB section of the budget. For the operating budget, the proposed revenues for fiscal year 2024 are a total of $204 million. This is an increase of 4.5% from the 2023 budget. The largest revenue sources are taxes and service charges comprising of $115 million in total revenues. Of that amount, $71 million are taxes, while $45 million are charges for service. Proposed expenses and expenditures for the city for fiscal year 2023 total $207 million. The two largest expense categories are salaries and wages, $35.2 million, or 17%, and capital outlays, $60 million, at about 29%. The city property tax levy supports the city's general fund, the main operating fund of the city. 61% of the property tax levy funds the city's required contributions to the police and firefighter pension funds. The proposed levy for 2023, collected in 2024, is a flat levy. Due to new growth, a flat levy will result in a lower tax bill for a median family home. We estimate that by keeping a flat levy, this $500,000 home will pay $9 less in property taxes to the city in 2024 than it did in 2023. As a reminder, the city only comprises 7% of the property tax bill. In the future, the city council may consider increasing the tax levy to capture new growth, which is the new construction and annexation approximately about 2% of the EAV. This will provide additional revenue to support operations without increasing property taxes to the existing taxpayer. At the end of 2022, the city had a total of $122 million of debt. This included $79 million in general obligation bonds, $5 million in line of credit for the city's TIF funds, and about $40 million in low-interest IEPA loans to fund water and wastewater projects. In 2024, GEO bonds are budgeted to fund design engineering for the police station, for the atrium force main improvements, and for the metro station improvements. In 2023, the city estimates it will draw down about $1.9 million in additional line of credit, but will pay $2.3 million in 2024. The 2023 budget includes $25 million in IEPA loans for Bundle 5 of improvements to the water reclamation facility. The project is not estimated to begin in 2023 and will be carried over into the 2024 budget. The proposed 2024 budget includes $20.9 million of federal, state, and local grants. This increase from $7.7 million in 2023, of this, $20.9 million, $17.6 million is a metro station improvement project. The city also receives state grants for a fire truck of $850,000. I feel an important note is since at the onset of COVID-19, the city is fortunate to receive state and federal grant assistance to offset any negative impact of the pandemic. The city has received over $11 million in COVID-related funding. This additional funds allow the city to navigate the COVID-19 pandemic as well as fund many important projects. However, these funding sources will be fully depleted at the end of 2024. Going forward, the city will continue to apply for grant funds where applicable to offset costs. However, if grant funds are unavailable, the city will need to determine other sources of funding for some capital projects, or need to scale back its capital plan for the future. A schedule of budgeted grants can be found on page 927 in the supplemental section of the budget. General fund revenues for 2024 total $74 million and represent a decrease of $241,000. Overall, tax increases by 1.4 million, or about 3%. In total, the proposed property tax levy remains flat for 2023. Sales tax contribute most of the increase by $1.2 million, or 9%. The city continues to see strong performance of sales tax revenue. This is due to continued economic development, price inflation, and stabilization of auto sales. In 2023, estimated sales tax are an all-time high. The city is conservatively budgeting to keep the sales tax budget for 2024 flat from the 2023 estimated amount. And the city also continues to see good performance of home rule sales tax, use tax, and food and beverage tax, driven by consumer purchases and by price inflation. A cooling real estate market negatively impacted real estate transfer taxes in 2023, and that revenue is budgeted to decrease $220,000, or about 24% in 2024. The grant revenue is anticipated to decrease $3.1 million from the 2023 budget. As noted above, the sunset of the stimulus grant funds negatively impacts revenue for 2024 in the general fund. Increased interest rates have positively impacted interest income, which was negligible in 2020. In 2024, the city is budgeting for $400,000 in interest income, pegging the 2024 budget conservatively at the 2023 estimated actual income. The proposed general fund budget expenditures are $79 million for 2024 fiscal year, a decrease of $3 million from the 2023 fiscal budget. Expenditures before capital transfers increased by $2.3 million, or about 3%. Of this amount, $1.1 million is due to an increase in the actuarially determined required contribution to the police and fire pension funds. Capital expenditures increased by $1 million from 2023. Little projects in 2024 include engineering for new sidewalks on Crestview Avenue and Indiana Street, and implementation of bike and pedestrian plan improvements. Recognizing expenditures are greater than revenues, the general fund budget represents a deliberate use of fund balance of $5 million. For a projected general fund balance at the end of fiscal year 2023, a $13 point million, or 25.4%. The balance falls within the city's balance goal policy, the fund balance goal policy of 25 to 33%. Moving into 2024, the city will need to address the imbalance in revenue versus expenditure and develop a plan to stay within the fund balance policy levels. As noted earlier in the transmittal memo, stimulus sources from CARES Act and ARPA have allowed the city to fund many capital projects and operating costs. These funds will be fully exhausted by the end of 2024. The city will need to evaluate how to maintain a fund balance within policy limits for the 2025 budget. Current projections show the 2025 fund balance at 8.9% of operating expenditures. Stormwater remains a key initiative of the city and was cited as an area to continue to work on in both the strategic plan and the citizen survey. The city council recently approved a 0.5% increase in the home rule sales tax to fund debt service and future stormwater projects. Securing this funding source will allow the city to continue stormwater improvements. Total revenues of the municipal utility fund are budgeted to decrease $13.5 million, or 23% from the 2023 budget. This is primarily due to budget debt proceeds in 2023 of $28 million. Revenues before debt proceeds are budgeted in 2024 to increase $7.5 million. MUF expenditures are budgeted to increase by $20 million in 2024. This increase is directly attributable to the Bundle 5, which was budgeted in 2023 in the amount of $25 million. The city is finishing a water and sewer rate study to determine water and sewer rates for the upcoming fiscal year. The study, the rate study will run concurrent with the budget process and the spending plan for 2024. May need to be, the plan for 2024 may need to be adjusted based on the city council's direction on water and sewer rates. The rate study will further look at operating and capital rates for the city. Factors influencing rates include the future capital plan, regulatory IEPA requirements to treat phosphorus at the water reclamation facility, and the goal to increase the MUF reserve balance towards a goal of 25% of operating expenses. While the city made positive progress in 2021 and 2022, the 2023 draft budget demonstrated the city was veering off this positive path. Revenues have been lower than expected, and expenses are beginning to see the effects of inflation and supply-demand complications. The 2022 water main project was deferred as the city was unable to procure materials for the project. To not lose ground in growing a reserve, the city deferred the water main project for 2023. The draft rate study estimates a need for significant rate increase in 2024 to complete the items needed in the capital plan. The proposed 2024 budget reinstitutes the water main program at $5 million annually and continues the annual sanitary sewer program at $2.4 million. The parking fund revenue saw a sharp decline from the pandemic. Changes for service, permanent daily fee revenue hit their lowest level in 2021 at 36% of pre-pandemic levels as residents halted their commutes into downtown Chicago. Since then, residents have resumed commuting, but not at pre-pandemic frequencies. Many residents still work a portion of their work week at home, and the city has seen a shift from annual permits to monthly and daily usage only. The city estimates that 2023 and 2024 will be at a 69% of pre-pandemic levels. The parking fund has been relying on the general fund to bridge the imbalances in revenues and expenditures. At the end of 2023, it is estimated that the parking fund will owe the general fund $1.6 million. The finance committee anticipates reviewing parking rates in a long-term fiscal plan for the parking fund at the end of 2023. There are three TIF districts that have budgets for 2024. The North York TIF, property tax increment is projected to increase by 5% in 2024. The growth of the fund should allow the city to repay its portion of the line of credit by the end of 2024. The 2024 budget includes two sidewalk projects. First is the North York Sidewalk Improvement Project, which constructs sidewalks on North York, being the corridor between Lake Street and Crestview Avenue. Federal grants contribute $1.53 million towards a $2.3 million project. The second is engineering for the Crestview Sidewalk Project in 2024, with construction occurring in 2025. The Lake Street and Church redevelopment area was approved in 2026 to help the area along Lake Street in underdeveloped areas. In 2023, the city will complete construction of the Lake Street frontage water main project and will draw down a lot of credit to do so. No major capital projects are planned in 2024 due to the fund balance, but in 2025, industrial concrete street resurfacing is tentatively programmed, but we'd be dependent upon available increment to complete the project. The downtown TIF was established in 2018, and like TIF 4 and 5, the 2024 budget provides for the sign improvement grant, retail business grant, and facade programs. The 2024 budget plan for the start of construction of the metro station improvement project, the total cost of the project estimated at $44.1 million, offset by $35.1 million in grant funds. City will, the city staff are still working to secure additional grant funds to further reduce the cost of this project. General obligation bonds will be used for any balance not funded with federal grants. As far as the economic outlook, in 2022, the equalized assessed value in Elmhurst, excluding the TIF areas, grew 4%. Of this amount, 2.8% presented base growth, and 1.2% represented new construction. The average growth over the past four years is 4.7%. For the 2023 levy collected in 2024, the city has estimated a growth of 4%. The city has seen residential real estate cool in 2023 as rising interest rates negatively impacted the housing market. As part of the O'Hare submarket, Elmhurst Business Parks continue to be highly sought after. The city's industrial vacancy rate is 0.6% below the DuPage County rate of 5.8%. Elmhurst is likewise highly sought after for commercial uses. The city's real estate vacancy is 2.2% better than the DuPage County average of 7.5%. And our transit-oriented development in downtown city center remain popular as well. In 2022, construction began on new development, Devine, which includes 200 new residences in the downtown. The development is expected to be completed in 2024 and positively impact the city AV. All this new development helps to grow our property tax base and diversifies the property tax liability to all our local government units. Conclusion, the fiscal plan continues to, the city's roadway program continues investment economic development to promote Elmhurst growth, maintains the current level of city services, and maintains the general fund levels within fund balance policies. Present as a sound fiscal plan for the city of Elmhurst for the next fiscal year, I request the council's positive consideration. I would also like to thank the city council for the responsible manner in which they oversee the finance of the city, and thank the finance department staff, along with the department directors and other management staff for their input and cooperation during the budget process.
Thank you, Mr. Kopp. So before we jump in, I know a lot of aldermen are new to the process, and it is a bit daunting when we go through it. So if you have questions, now is the time to ask. And always ask questions in between our budget sessions. We will tell you, and it's kind of like being in school again, you'll have homework assignments of what's going to come up, what chapters we expect to cover in the coming meetings. A lot of acronyms. I remember at the whole first budget session, I thought, what is this KEB thing all about? I finally realized, capital expenditure budget. And there was talk about J-forms, and I will point that out specifically, that if we have any expenditure that increases by 5% or $25,000, go to the end of that part of the budget, and you'll see an explanation. So it probably will answer the question you will ask of, why did it go up by 9%? The explanation, you would expect to see it there. The last thing I want to mention is that we have circle backs, so there will be topics that might occur to you during the budget process, during our discussions. It's always good to check in with staff ahead of time, or maybe one of the committee chairs, me, city manager. But there'll be discussion, and city staff may not be able to answer it directly, or we may want to, you may ask a question, and you'll get an answer, and you'll want to think about it and readdress it. We call those circle backs. So if there's any point we're on that you say, okay, that's something we want to look at again, you would ask, can we have a circle back on there? And we will compile a list of the circle back items, which will be addressed at the end of our review of the entire budget, and we'll go back and we'll have the answers to all those circle back questions. As I said before, our goal is to not go past 10 o'clock any night, unless we are just ending something, we might go a few minutes past. So each week, it'll be updated, but you have, as part of our agenda, the budget topics and the scheduled dates. The scheduled dates may change. But tonight, city manager, assistant city manager, we're going to, retiring assistant city manager, we're going to start with the museum.
Correct.
All right. Back to you.
Director Dave Ober.
If I may.
Please.
I actually have two comments on the budget summary section before we dive into a department. Can I address those now?
I think as finance chair, you might have something to say. Please do.
Thank you. Thank you to staff and everybody who's participated, and I apologize to the history museum folks for these two brief questions that I have. And these will definitely be circle backs or follow-ups. I want to thank the finance team for providing the chart on 1-32, which gives the public and the city council an overview of our debt policy and its impact on, how we issue bonds and its impact on our debt policy as it relates to percent of EAV that we have outstanding in debt. As everyone knows who read the KEB, we have a number of layered, multimillion-dollar capital projects that are contemplated in the five-year KEB and begin in both 2024 and 2025. I would like to request that something like this chart on 1-32 gets projected out for the full five-year of the KEB, assuming we would execute the KEB as currently contemplated, and the two, with everything timed out as it currently is in the operating budget and in the KEB. In addition to that, it would be great, and I spoke with Director Coyle about this, I think she understands what I'm looking for, it would be great if we could have some sort of a projection, a lot of assumptions, I understand, a lot of assumptions would have to be undertaken to create this, but some sort of a projection of what the implied tax levy would look like if all of the general obligation bonds that are contemplated in the two-year operating budget and the five-year KEB were undertaken. At what point in time would we not be able to abate the debt anymore? And what would the implied tax levy amount be to fund those general obligation debt issuances? Thank you.
Good points. Thank you, Chair. And by the way, this is Director Coyle's second year, so probably see some creative stuff in here, probably reflects more of your thinking now. Without further ado.
May I also ask a general question before we jump in? Sorry, history museum. On page 2-2, where it's just essentially a summary of revenues and expenditures, I was wondering, and I don't know if this can be answered off the cuff or outside the meeting, either is fine. As everybody knows, throughout the city of Elmhurst, we've had some significant developments, real estate developments, condos, apartments, et cetera, especially in our central business district. I was just wondering, and I understand property taxes are in arrears, so I do understand that point, but it's kind of surprising to me that in 2024, as well as 2023, essentially it looks like it's a flat revenue source with all these properties. So I don't know if it's possible offline, we could be provided what ones have been put into the property taxes of the 13, roughly 13.5 million, and not, and what we could see past that. It seems to me that the $14.2 million in 2025, we're seeing a lot more come online, and that's where we're going to see the bigger bump, but if that could be looked at.
Right. I think we have an answer for that, but.
I can answer it, and if there's more information or more analysis, I can certainly, we can provide that. So the developments in the downtown that are in the TIF districts and North York and the downtown, that delta or the growth related to those projects would go into the TIF funds at this point. So what would go into the general fund would just be the base growth. And we do levy a levy, which is a dollar amount. And so the levy that was presented to the finance committee at their last meeting was a flat levy, and the reason behind that is that was what was needed to maintain the 25% fund balance policy. So certainly to the extent that when that growth rose out of the TIF, the city could levy to bring that back into the general fund.
Thank you for that gentle reminder. Yes, it goes to the TIF versus general fund, then to the TIF.
Well, you're new here, you'll catch on. All right. Now, museum.
Museum. Oh, wait a minute. We've got other questions over here.
Alderman Erby.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes.
For the overall economic outlook, I heard our director of water say that we're at 50,000 gallons left per day of our $4 million, or 4 million, 4 million gallons a day allocation. He said that if we exceed that, there will be no more water mains or sewers hooked up, that we will not get permitted until we comply. So I just wanted to make sure, he felt that was an economic development issue, and just we could circle back or just.
Let's not circle back, it's your prerogative, but let's wait till we get to the public works budget, and you may get your question answered. If it's not answered to your satisfaction, then I would invite you to circle back. All right. I think that's about all we're going to do tonight. Oh, wait. The museum now?
We're going to go with the museum. I'll turn over to Director Ober. The museum budget's on page 2-67.
Thank you, Assistant City Manager Kopp, Mayor Levin, and respected aldermen, city staff, and members of the public. It's my pleasure to discuss our proposed budget for the coming year. Before I do that, though, I'd like to turn the floor over to the Elmhurst Heritage Foundation's Vice President, Jean Baker, who's going to just give a very quick recap of the support offered by the foundation this year and coming into the next.
Thank you, Dave, and thank you, Mayor Levin, Assistant Manager Kopp, and members of the city council. It is officially way past my bedtime, because I'm an old person, but I'm going to do my best, I promise. Thank you for inviting us here tonight as part of the annual city budget process. As Dave said, I'm Jean Baker, and I serve currently on the Heritage Foundation Board as Vice President. George Capaniak, who's the current president, could not be with us tonight, and he sends his regrets. There are several members of the foundation that were here.
Still are.
And are still here. And they're here to support us, and I'd like them to be recognized for their dedication and support to the foundation, as well, of course, to the city of Elmhurst.
Jean, you can introduce them if you like.
Well. Oh, I'm getting nod. They would like to wave.
All right.
They would like to wave. Look at them. That's wonderful. We're a great group, and we have a very good time while we're doing hard and meaningful work. As you hopefully know, the Elmhurst Heritage Foundation is a nonprofit fundraising arm for the Elmhurst History Museum and the Churchville One Room Schoolhouse. We support the museum and schoolhouse in a variety of ways. These include advocating and educating the community, helping market the wonderful programs and exhibits the museum offers, and fundraising, as well as friend raising, to be able to provide an annual grant to the museum that helps provide for their needs and supports the exhibits and educational goals. This funding helps extend the impact of the city's approved budget. I am happy to add that after a membership drive, the foundation has been able to increase our membership this year by 35%. The past year, the Elmhurst Heritage Foundation grant funded 100% of the costs associated with three exhibits, as well as all of the museum's educational programs and events for 2023. The foundation plans to do the same for 2024. In addition In addition to funding all of the museum's exhibits and programs for the past year, the foundation also underwrote upgrades to the museum's award-winning exhibit about Elmhurst by all accounts, which includes Lessons from the School Marm, a new interactive display which brings parts of the Churchville One Room Schoolhouse into the gallery, the newly conserved portrait of Elmhurst resident Jane Byrd Bryan by GPA Healy with an interactive kiosk which shares the histories of the Bryan family as well as Healy. Discovery drawers throughout the exhibit, offering hands-on learning opportunities for our younger visitors. An updated interactive map will be installed in December. You will be able to easily see the growth and development of Elmhurst decade by decade with a series of aerial maps and historic photographs of important Elmhurst homes, businesses, parks, schools, and more. A larger, more robust biography wall, better suited for group visits, featuring stories of important men and women who contributed to Elmhurst's rich history. And I would be remiss if I didn't mention that my mother, Jean Albaker, is included in the biography wall. During her life in Elmhurst, she was involved in many community groups and co-chaired the underpass committee. Some of you might be new enough not to know that Elmhurst didn't have an underpass years ago. And for that, we are thankful to my mother, Ed Vertvek, and many other Elmhurst residents to make the underpass possible. My mother was also included in the book, The First Ladies of Elmhurst. In addition to all this, the foundation continued to underwrite the transportation costs for local schools to attend field trips at the museum and the schoolhouse. The 15th anniversary reception at Wilder Mansion, where the newly restored Jane Byrd Bryan portrait was unveiled. Foundation funds also underwrote the creation of three new outreach programs, one on Native American history, one on immigration, and one on the Civil War. These outreach programs help our local teachers and students meet state and local curriculum goals while learning about history. The museum also expanded outreach to seniors with dementia and Alzheimer's through foundation, through our funds, and we continue to host the biennial candidates forum. Lest you think that the museum team is serious all the time, the highly skilled museum staff knows how to have fun as well. The museum team drafted highly skilled softball players from the community to play on the town team. The gown team from Elmhurst University wasn't much of a match for the skills, and it was unfortunate to see them lose in such a grand style. If I knew how to trash talk, I would do that right now. The 8th Annual Craft Beer Fest was well received and attended by more than 1,200 people from more than 106 communities. Thank you all who helped support the event, which helps support the larger Elmhurst community. Please save the date of Saturday, September 14, 2024. I can pause for a moment so you can write it down for the 9th Annual Craft Beer Fest, and please join us. Looking ahead, the foundation once again is committed to funding 100% of the costs of the museum's exhibits and programs. This will include a series of concerts and performances at the museum's new public performance space, which will be completed on the museum grounds this summer. In closing, I'd like to thank you, the city of Elmhurst, for your support for the museum over many years. As an Elmhurst resident for most of my life, it continues to be a pleasure to be from and live in this great city. We are so fortunate for the schools, parks, library, churches, service organization, shops, businesses, restaurants, and cultural institutions, as well as people that add so much to our community. We are fortunate in so many ways. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jean. David?
Thank you, Jean. You're a hard act to follow. So just recapping a couple of significant achievements this year and then looking ahead what this budget is going to allow us to invest in in general. Three major exhibits this year, we began the year with In Pursuit of Happiness: Immigrants in Our Community, which connected strongly with state and local curriculum standards, really helped us continue our efforts to connect with area teachers and students and build some new partnerships that are going to bear fruit for many, many years to come. This was followed by The Bicycle: Two Wheels to Adventure, which explored the history and evolution of the bike with a very special focus on J. Hart Rosdell, our own Indiana Jones, a mild-mannered social studies teacher by day, world traveler on his bicycle when he wasn't doing that, and also gave us a chance to talk about the bike and pedestrian plan and connect with our new Walkin' Rollers group as well. We're closing out the year with what I am proud to say is a blockbuster show, Lost Chicago Land Department Stores. This highlights iconic stores like Marshall Fields, Carson Perry Scott, Goldblatts, Montgomery Ward, and local favorites like Old Swang's as well. This show is generating the strongest foot traffic and media attention I have ever seen. If you haven't noticed, we've been in Forbes, we've been on WGN, Fox 32, WLS, the Chicago Tribune, Daily Herald, and more. And if the attendance trends of this first month continue, this exhibit is going to help us set a new attendance record period, beating out Worlds of Wonder, our 2019 blockbuster. So pretty exciting. If you come to the museum on a weekday afternoon at 1:00, you will see people waiting at the door, having just gone to one of our restaurants and coming as a group to check out this exhibit. It's been really a great success, and it's a real, real feather in the cap of our very creative and hardworking staff. They really worked hard on this. New programs in support of our exhibits included a performance by the Chicago Immigrant Orchestra, our cultural crossroads celebration with York High School, immigrant solidarity DuPage and the Glin Foundation, our bike bonanza with a BMX stunt rider who can do things I didn't think were possible on a bicycle, and a fully sold-out lecture here in the chamber just two weeks ago with Leslie Goddard, who is our creative consultant on the Lost Chicago Land Department Stores exhibit. And I will say, all programs in support of Lost Chicago Land Department Stores have sold out, a first in the museum's history. We are really, really generating a lot of attention and foot traffic on this. So looking ahead to 2024, we are going to do some pretty dramatic things. We're going to continue Lost Chicago Land Department Stores through the end of January, followed by, spring is going to see Victory at Home, 1941 to 45, which is going to be a retrospective on the World War II home front in Elmhurst, the western suburbs, and Chicagoland. In the fall, we plan to open Chicagoland Movie Palaces: A Century of Folly and Film. This last exhibit will open Labor Day weekend to mark the centennial of our own York Theater and will explore the birth and evolution of movie theaters from the era of vaudeville and silent movies to talkies, color film, and now lounge chairs and Dolby stereo. We will see one of the major significant investments in the museum campus, completion of a new public performance space on the museum's east lawn, supported by an Illinois Public Museum capital grant in the amount of $698,500, and conversion of the east parking lot into flex space for audiences. This will continue our efforts to build capacity for larger outdoor, family-friendly events like concerts, storytelling, and dramatic performances. While, of course, see with that new space, which we plan to open in midsummer, a series of outdoor concerts and performances, we're going to kick this off with a 1940-style USO show to complement our World War II home front exhibit, which will include an Andrew Sisters-inspired group backed by a swing band, as well as a display of vintage World War II-era vehicles. We're just looking for our Bob Hope to emcee, is the one thing we still need, plus games and crafts for children, and an engaging family-friendly program, a bunch of family-friendly programs in support of our major exhibits, including a 1940s-themed cooking class with culinary historian Ellie Carlson, a visit from members of the Rockford Peaches Vintage Baseball Club, who reprise the game as seen in the film A League of Their Own, programs on Victory Gardens and the Women's Air Force Service Pilots by historian and certified pilot Rebecca Tullock, plus a classic film series, you got to have that if you're going to do something on movie palaces. Additional family-friendly historic programs include a visit from Pamela Welcome as Harriet Tubman, a new lecture titled Local Legends About Elmhurst Men and Women Who Made Important Contributions to Arts, Culture, Sports, Politics, and History, and a Family Day at the Churchville One Room Schoolhouse, featuring music, crafts, games, and more. In addition, we'll have four mini-exibits and the By All Accounts exhibit, just to keep things fresh and always turning over, and we do anticipate a reprisal of our Town vs. Gown Vintage Baseball Game, this time it's personal, as well as Museum Explorer Summer Camp, our Museum Makers Monday program, and the Elmhurst Craft Beer Fest, plus narrated trolley tours, guiding walking tours, and more. So that's kind of what we're looking at in the year ahead. Looking at page 267 and looking at our budget here, I just want to call out a couple of line items where you may see differences from the previous years. Largely, we've tried to keep this budget as neutral as possible. As a matter of fact, if you back-end out the capital budget and look at the operating budget, our operating budget for 2024 looks almost exactly like 2022. We're keeping this pretty neutral. We do see in our proposed salaries and wages line item here, a slight uptick, but this is largely just COLA. We are looking to keep staff at 5.75 full-time equivalents, or FTEs. We have four full-time, four part-time seasonal staff, and we're looking to add one summer intern to help us with a very, very, very busy summer season as we break in our new performance space. Other line items I just want to call attention to very quickly, 53120 employee training, you will see that's upticked from 2,500 to 4,500. During the COVID shutdown and in the aftermath of that, we really haven't been able to send our staff to anything other than a very local conference. We'd like to be able to send two of our staff to a national conference to keep them creative and keep them always on the cutting edge of what we're doing in the museum field. In addition to that, if you look at line 532100, conservation of artifacts, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the wrong one, rather, 531190, building maintenance, that's a slight uptick from 15,000 to 17,000. That's largely to do some treatment and mitigation to prevent moss from growing on the roof of the Churchville One Room Schoolhouse to extend the life of the roof of that building, and that is a recommended mitigation process. And then if you look at our line 532105, educational programs, you'll see an uptick from 30,000 to 36,000. That is in anticipation of having some big splashy performances on our public performance space. All of those funds will be underwritten once again from our friends at the Elmhurst Heritage Foundation. And looking at 532115 exhibitions, you'll see a slight uptick from 42,500 to 46,000. That is again in anticipation of a couple of very, very splashy exhibits and replacement of some outdated interactives as well. Again, all of that will be completely supported by our friends at the Elmhurst Heritage Foundation. We appreciate their generosity there. And then I would also call out 542105, archives and manuscripts, increasing that from 1,700 to 4,000. That is a one-time cost related to digitizing the last 20 years of the Elmhurst independent so that we're up to date. Again, that increase will be offset as well by a grant from the Elmhurst Heritage Foundation. And as we flip to the back page, the only other thing that I will just mention again, looking at 2023 and then looking into 2024, we have several grant-funded capital projects that we are closing out or are executing. We will be closing out a $255,300 grant, Illinois Public Museum capital grant that paid for a lot of ADA accessibility issues and also paid for some upgrades to the exhibits as well. That will be closed out by the end of the year, those projects are done. We do anticipate rolling over a significant amount of the project for building the new public performance space into, next year we'll begin some design work over the winter and then break ground and put it in in the spring. But again, that is completely paid for by a $698,500 Illinois Public Museum capital grant. And then we do anticipate having to do work on the chimneys of the building. I introduced this group to that last year. We did suffer some damage from the Durico winds that came through in 2020. We caught that through a professional individual, we were able to retain through a cap grant, and engineering work has been done. Bids are going to be open later this year, but I anticipate that project is going to roll into next year. That is a $213,600 project, and that is a project we will have to do to repair those chimneys. So that's everything.
All right. Alderman Bram and Alderman Nardini.
Yeah, excuse my laughter. Dave, you spoke so quickly, I am out of breath for you.
Well, I want to get a drink here real quick.
I'm surprised you didn't pass out on that one. Holy cow. I appreciate the summary in regards to the museum. Dave, you actually answered some of my questions already. In regards to the staffing, that was one that I already had. I just want to ask on 2-8, the revenue, there's a line item 470315, yeah, Museum Foundation Donation, is that all from the Heritage Foundation? Is that what that line item?
Give me that line item again, I'm sorry.
What page do you want, Alderman Bram?
2-8. 2-8. Museum Foundation Donation.
I'm speaking quick like Dave, I guess.
Yeah, yeah, okay. So that, that does encapsulate the grant from the foundation. Again, we're a bit behind always in billing that out, so it's not 100% up to date. The foundation actually gave us a grant this year, by the time we execute the rest of the year, it'll be $184,000 for fiscal year 2023.
That's definitely more than what's reflected in here, which is incredible. Well, one of the things I just want to throw out there, the history, at least my history with the, well, now it's called the History Museum, years ago, decades ago even, we had some rough times, as everybody knows. Some of the aldermen, including myself, were challenging the museum, as well as, this is Dave, way before your time, as well as the Heritage Foundation in regards to offsetting some of the costs that was an expenditure for the city of Elmhurst. I will tell you, I would guesstimate it was probably about 10 years ago or so, and the museum, as well as the foundation, has done an incredible job, as Dave, you already noted, stated about some of the highlights of the exhibits. It's been incredible, and I am one of the biggest cheerleaders now for the History Museum, as well as the foundation. To imagine that they were probably raising about $10,000 or $20,000 a year about 10 years ago, and now we're closing in on, you know, a couple of hundred thousand dollars. So I want to applaud everybody who's connected with the History Museum, I don't do this very often, but Dave, yourself, your staff, all the volunteers and the foundation, an excellent job, and I'm so happy that you guys are getting the exposure that you guys deserve.
Thank you. Thank you.
Alderman Nardini.
Thanks. Two things. One, this is my first budget go-around, so bear with me. The line item of liabilities insurance, 536105, is doubling. Did you address that, or why is it doubling?
Yeah, I should have called that one out, actually, but that's, and again, I can defer to Christina Coyle on that as well, but every year, coverage in general for the entire city tends to go up about 10%, more or less, and that's just our cost share as a department of the city.
Correct. So the, the insurance cost for the entire city, last year increased nine and a half percent. This year, we're projecting a 10% increase, those premiums. We don't have that number yet, that comes in at the end of the year, but we anticipate as, there has been more natural disasters, even though they necessarily haven't been in Elmhurst, that's negatively impacting property liability insurance. Cyber insurance is becoming more expensive as well as, you know, the more cyber incidents occur. So we are budgeting for a 10% increase overall. And then we did this year update the allocation of the premiums across all departments.
So I understand you, if it's going up 10-ish percent, why is this going up 100%?
So that is just their share of kind of how we re-divisioned the costs between the different departments. So it's a combination of factors. So 10% increase overall to the city, and then also just reallocating that between the departments based off of who, as an example, we allocated the cyber insurance completely to the IT department this year. So that's one cost that got allocated there because that made sense as a, as an IT expense solely. So we updated that allocation to just be more realistic with where the costs actually go.
Okay.
And then I believe Dave also does have one policy himself that is also coded to that line item.
We do have a fine arts insurance policy, and that has gone up, but it's gone up for a really good reason, and that is that we acquired and restored a masterpiece painting by GPA Healy, whose works hang in the National Gallery, the White House, and the Smithsonian, so.
So it's a combination of those two things.
The other thing I wanted to say was really sort of echoing Alderman Bram, praise of the Heritage Foundation. We are in a public setting, it's worth mentioning that during the economic downturn, they changed their bylaws so that they could actually employ somebody briefly so that the museum didn't have to lose staff, which is, I'm thrilled to know that I live in a town that has a non-for-profit that did the hoop dancing that they had to do to be able to take care of the museum in a time when economic downturn was really severe. So hats off to that work. That's awesome.
Alderman Hill?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to ask a question about 530100 consultant fees. I see the same amount allocated this year as for last year. Is that an ongoing consultancy contract?
Yes, that, that is reflective of our consultancy with Ken Bartels, who advises... He works with us and the foundation together, and the foundation helps to pay for some of that as well, yeah. But frankly, a lot of, you know, our sponsorship program, for example, he really introduced the concept. It is a very robust exhibit sponsorship program now. We're only three weeks into the new sponsorship campaign. I'm already halfway through our goal, having pushed that out.
Okay. And this is great intel. How many years is the contract for right now, do you know? Is it ongoing, annually renewed, or?
Three-year.
Yeah, three-year.
2024.
Thank you.
And we're going to go with Alderman Bastido, then Alderman Brennan, and we're going to see if we can go around once first before we go to Alderman Bastido.
Okay, so for clarification for that consulting contract, maybe this is for Assistant City Manager Cup. So is that in addition to the economic development work he does? Those are separate contracts, or that's both the same one?
One contract that covers his economic development portion of it, plus the History Museum.
Okay.
It's budgeted in a few different places in the budget also.
All right, because he does work in different areas, but it's all that same contract?
His invoices get billed towards a different TIF districts, depending on what, if it's in a TIF district, general economic development, and then head member, City Museum, and there, I believe there's some also some communication portion of his contract also.
And is that total dollar amount, maybe that's a circle back, was it not to exceed 75,000 a year?
I think it's less than that. Actually, it's a 500-hour maximum, and I think $100 an hour is correct.
So $50,000? Okay, thank you.
Alderman Brennan?
Thank you. So as I sit here at 9:40, listening to Jane and Dave, I can only think, how lucky is Elmhurst, right, to have, you know, a museum like this and people that just put their heart and soul into it. Dave, you mentioned a couple of projects that are rolling over to next year, and they're grant-funded, et cetera. I don't see that rollover amount, so would that be on page 260, or 2-68?
So the rollover amount is included in the estimated for 2023 because that's where we've included it. At the end of the year, as part of the preparation for the ordinance, we kind of true up where we think projects are going to land, and then we create the rollover schedule, which is presented with the budget.
So throughout our reviews, that will be a similar concept?
Correct, correct. The only, there may be a case or two where if a project completely hasn't started, nothing has begun, where we just rebudget for it because there was absolutely nothing done in this current fiscal year. So there's a project or two, more probably in the Public Works Division where that's the case, but if the project has started in any fashion, we put it in the estimated column, and then it gets carried over into the next fiscal year.
So it's at the end of the fiscal year, all right. So eventually, it'd be nice to sort of see, have visibility into what the rollovers are.
Yes, and so we do present that with the final budget ordinance. At the last meeting, we'll present a schedule of the rollovers, what they are and what accounts they go into, so you can reconcile the original budget as we've discussed it, plus the carryovers to get to the final budget ordinance that City Council approves.
Got it. I just assumed, Dave, you stuck the landing at the exact dollar amount as your budget, so, but, all right. Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone who hasn't had an opportunity yet before we go second time around? All right, Alderman Nardini, oh no.
No, thanks.
You don't want it, all right. All right, additional discussion? Well, I won't belabor it, but I'll chime in. Obviously, it's been a spectacular year for the museum and the foundation, great things. I was able to see, I think I was one of the first to see the department's sort of one, so if you haven't seen it, certainly worthwhile, but if you're about my age, you'll understand it better. All right. Anything else for the foundation? Thank you, Director.
Thank you for that opportunity.
Jane. City Manager, given that we have about 15 minutes, is there any, I don't know if we're going to go into heavy departments, but what is your guidance on this?
I think I can start off, and we'll skip the fire and police for tonight, because I think they'll take longer than 15 minutes, but maybe the planning, zoning, economic development on page 233.
233.
So the Planning and Zoning Department provides assistance to the Zoning Planning Commission, Development Planning and Zoning Committee, and the City Council regarding applications for zoning relief, and applications for initial use, map amendment, text amendments on zoning ordinance, and amendments to the comprehensive plan. In 2023, the Planning and Zoning Division processed more than 15 cases for conditional use, PUDs and variations, and continued to facilitate the update to the Elmhurst 1992 zoning ordinance. The Planning and Zoning Division also worked with the Public Art Commission on the second mural installation on the site of Face Rebrewing through the mural program and assisted in implementation of the sustainability plan.
Could you put the microphone a little closer?
Yes, sir. Line item 530110, professional services, includes completion of the comprehensive review and update of the current 1992 zoning ordinance, as well as an update to the downtown plan and updating the subdivision ordinance. The zoning ordinance update was restarted in 2021 after a pause due to the pandemic and is anticipated to be completed in early 2024. The Elmhurst subdivision ordinance, which is a companion document to the zoning ordinance, has not been comprehensively updated since its adoption in 1993. Additionally, Sustainability Action Plan adopted in 2018 is due for an update, and money has been included in the planning budget to hire a consultant to assist in the update. Though the downtown plan was most recently updated in 2016 due to the progression of new residents living in the downtown and post-pandemic changes, the way people live, work, and recreate in the city center, recreate, not recreate, recreate in the city center, that's a little better. We are currently working with the Housel Levine Planning Team to assist us with the upgrade of the plan in 2024. As stated above, the last comprehensive rewrite of the zoning ordinance is from 1992. The world has changed in many ways since that time. In 1992, there were no doggy daycares, but there were still video stores. The useless in the zoning ordinance are incredibly lengthy and outdated. Many uses could be consolidated and better defined. The zoning ordinance is not intuitive or user-friendly. The updates to the ordinance will incorporate modern practices to make the ordinance user-friendly for city staff, property owners, and developers. Line item 530295, public information programming is administered by the Business Development Manager, Heather Baracus, and includes such program as our commercialistic professionals' event and Makers and Shakers Entrepreneurial Event and Series, continuing to encourage business growth in Elmhurst. It also includes marketing programs such as Elmhurst Loves Local and Support of the Local Business Community. Though this role's focused on business advocacy and relationship building in an effort to grow the city's economy, in 2024, the Business Development Manager will be updating and implementing the strategic plan for economic development and facilitating an update in the city's liquor ordinance in an effort to simplify and administer the liquor licenses. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
All right, discussion. Alderman Bram?
Yes, thank you. Sorry, I wanted to make sure my phone wasn't about to ring. On page 233, the, once again, consultant fees, 530100, I'm making an assumption, and Assistant City Manager, if you could let me know if it is correct or not, is this, as Alderman Hill referenced earlier, for the History Museum, is this also the contract referred earlier with Ken Bartels' consultant, or is this another contract or multiple?
This is multiple. This is also the contract, the consulting contract with Charlie Van Slike, and Ken Bartels, a portion of both. The same thing, there's monies budgeted in all the TIF districts for both those consulting fees, and then Bartels is also in the History Museum budget.
Mr. Mayor, if I may request this line item and any other line item referencing those two consultants, if we can make that a circle back?
Very good. Alderman Tulluto?
Thank you. I have a little bit of concern, and I would like staff to address their thoughts on the, just the sheer amount of plan reviews in that that we're undertaking. It seems to me that it's a lot of work, and we're doing it like 2023, 2024, 2025, like, do we have enough actual staff time, council time, committee time to manage that workload over the course of those years? As you describe it, it's a significant amount of work, and it seems almost rushed to do it so quickly, and I guess why do we need to do it so quickly and, you know, year after year after year?
Yeah, well, as you look at the budget even for this year, what we had budgeted last year to what we actually expended this year, it's a significant difference because we didn't have the time to do some of that. Like, the subdivision ordinance was actually in the 2023 budget. We didn't get to that because the zoning ordinance was taking more time than we thought it would. I mean, we're budgeting for these things. I think there needs to be updates to these. Obviously, the subdivision ordinance was updated last in 1993. Could we continue with the way it is right now? We probably could. We'll make text amendments to it as we need to going forward, but it does need a comprehensive redo, just as the zoning ordinance did. You know, we've worked with that since 1992. I think the plan is we, you know, we use consultants from all of this. I think same with our downtown plan. That is something that was a referral and recommendation to City Council that we look at that, and it's appropriate. I think we need to do that one because of where we are right now and just how people live in the downtown right now, and the things with the outdoor dining and all the things that we've talked about in the past that weren't really in effect when this plan was looked at in 2016. I guess, we don't have to do them all, I guess, but like the sustainability plan too, it's something that's really important, everybody. Again, the difference with that is we, in the past, we didn't really have a consulting helping us with that. We're budgeting now for someone else to help us with that, so it's not just as much as it was with staff and the sustainability task force in the past to help us accomplish that. But your point is well-taken. It's a lot of work, as we're seeing like the zoning ordinance has taken substantially longer than we thought it would. We knew it was going to take a while, but it's taken longer than we thought it would, and part of that was it got broken up because of the pandemic to start off with, but.
Some of the work is, if you follow DPZ, they're pretty steeped in the review of the ordinances. I know that the liquor changes, I've spent a lot of time working with staff to get that kind of in a place to, we have like 26 different categories of liquor licenses, I couldn't even tell you what they were. Everyone opens up a new store and, oh, you need a liquor license for people who are painting pictures, you know, you know. So that's one where we're actually pretty far down the road. It'll go to actually PAS, but it's, so some of them are getting budgeted for that, but they're already in progress, but your points, go ahead. Alderman Tulluto?
I guess, I'm not arguing that any of these things need to be done. I guess what I'm wondering is if it was put onto the budget because council said we should do these things, what I would ask for is a reasonable lens from staff of, especially now that they've gotten through the time with the full zoning ordinance, or, am I saying that right, the ordinance review that we're doing currently, you know, realistically, what can get done over the course of the, you know, the next three years, and, you know, would staff recommend any, you know, pushing out one or one thing by a year or laying it out in a slightly different way? I also am a little bit, you know, concerned about just making sure that City Council and staff has the time to do it right and do it well. And I can tell from, you know, just personally, the amount of time I've invested, which is way less than the amount of time that the committee has invested in this zoning ordinance review, it is a lot of work, and I want to make, I don't want to rush through things, I want to make sure that they're done in a thorough way and that there's time to do it. So that's my follow-up on that.
Would you like to circle back on that to report?
Yeah, I think staff can come back, and, you know, I think that Eileen and her team can take a look at like, yeah, how much time is it taking us to do this kind of a review? How much time, you know, do we think it would take for the downtown plan, for the sustainability plan, et cetera? And I understand the consultants that we would be paying for help that, but there is still staff and committee time that goes into moving these things forward.
Because even, you know, in 2025, the numbers, they project a redo of our comprehensive plan, which last time took about three years to do, I think it was. But that last time, David, that was 2009. I know we've done the sub-area plans in the meantime to keep it updated as much as we can, but, you know, I mean, I got to give, I mean, credit to the City Council for allowing us to do this planning. It was one of the things that when the Great Recession hit, we just stopped doing, and we realized after a couple of years, that was probably not a good idea, and I think it was Mayor Levin that said, we got to start doing this again, and we've seen great benefits by continuing to do it. So I think, you know, but to your point, if it's not done well, then, you know, don't do it, basically, but.
All right, Alderman Deuter?
Thank you, Mayor. For the funds that have been designated for the sustainability plan, can you talk about, is that just a routine update? Is that, are you anticipating a structure behind that? Like, how, I think the funding is ahead of the actual directive on this, and I'm just wondering how staff has anticipated that work being done.
I think it'll be pretty much an overhaul of the sustainability plan, taking a look at all the objectives, what they were in the past, what's new in the whole world of sustainability, which a lot has changed, obviously, in the last so many years. Not that our plan, the objectives in our plan, our goals are still not good goals to obtain, but I think it's more, it's going to be closer to what we're doing with the rest of these plans. There'll be a new scope to find. I mean, as I said, it's just, there's a lot of discussion, it's going to go to committee, probably the PS committee before we ever do that, but the last time we were at there with the sustainability updating it, we said, I think we need to take a look at this in a more substantial way. So I think it's going to be, I mean, we have, I think, $45,000, $50,000 budgeted for a look at the sustainability plan, so it's a substantial amount of money to.
Okay, thank you.
You know, have a consultant help us do it.
Alderman Erby?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. The numbers that are here on page 233, planning and development, the whole group, and then you come down at the bottom, and you have your totals, it would seem like it'd be nice if we had the number of permits that were approved and get a cost per permit, and then look at our revenue schedule and say, all right, should we up the houses? Or should we do some kind of adjustment on the revenue side? I think the cost side looks pretty good, so I'm for, this is more of a focus on revenue, and this would probably be a circle back, of course.
Is it Building Department more than this?
Yeah, that's, you're talking about the building permits.
Get to that.
Okay, that's on our.
We'll get to that, it'll be under.
I'm sorry, I thought that was there.
No, we're going to get there, not tonight, but, okay. Anyone else on this planning and development? Alderman Hill?
Thank you, Mayor. I just, trying to get a sense of the consultancy fees we pay, and I heard you say, mention it's built into the professional services budget, the consultant fees we get funded for that, for a consultant?
Consulting fees are on the consulting fee line item, not the professional services.
Oh, so that 310?
Let me clarify, consulting fees are the contracts with Van Slike and Bartels that work as independent contractors for us. Professional service fees are like hiring consulting firms like the planning group of Housel Levine to do our downtown plan, right, or hiring a group that does sustainability plans. So that's professional services as compared to the consulting fees.
I don't know if this is an honor's request then, but I think it would be helpful to understand, maybe if those are consultant fees, like when I hear about the sustainability plan, that sounds like we'll be hiring a consultant to advise us about the sustainability plan, so to me, it sounds like a consultancy fee. So it would be helpful, and I assume this would be a circle back, to get a sense of what those costs are that are embedded in that line item.
So the distinction's pretty clear, because consultancy is only those Van Slike.
Right.
But if you want a breakdown of the professional fees, we can do that.
That's what I meant, sorry.
Oh, by plan?
Yeah. Or just anticipate a budget for the.
Yeah, we can do that, for sure.
Yeah, so we'll do a circle back on professional fees. What are the, what is allocated to each of the potential plans we're looking at?
I could just tell you that right now.
If you want that, I'm pen poised, thank you.
So we currently have $100,000, and the $310,000, $100,000 is the downtown plant, subdivision ordinance is $70,000, TIF analysis for possible, we put this as a pretty general for TIF analysis.
this would be a circle back, to get a sense of what those costs are that are embedded in that line item.
So the distinction's pretty clear, because consultancy is only those Van Slike...
Right, but...
But if you want a breakdown of the professional fees, we can do that.
That's what I meant, sorry.
Oh, by plan?
Yeah. Or just anticipate a budget for the...
Yeah, we can do that, for sure.
Yeah, so we'll do a circle back on professional fees. What are the, what is allocated to each of the potential plans we're looking at?
I could just tell you that right now.
If you want that, I'm pen poised, thank you.
So we currently have $100,000, and the $310,000, $100,000 is the downtown plant. Subdivision ordinance is $70,000. TIF analysis for a possible, we put this as a pretty general for TIF analysis with the possibility of analyzing for the TIFs, is $50,000. Sustainability plan is $45,000, and then there's $45,000 in general planning for things that are anticipated. So that would be the total of the three hundred and fifty, the $310,000. But also for the downtown plan, that referral came in in December of last year. We did budget dollars for in 2023, so we'll probably carry, that plan is hopefully be approved this year still for the downtown plans, so there'll probably be some money carried over and from the 2023 to 2024 for the downtown plan also, because that's going to probably be about a $150,000 plan.
You may be going faster than Alderman Hill's pen, but they can provide that to you.
Thank you. All right, I appreciate it.
All right. Additional conversation? City Treasurer?
Thank you. The funding sources for these studies, is that just general revenue, anything specifically pegged?
Circle revenue, yeah.
All right. Alderman Brennan?
So I'm not quite sure if we're getting this on the circle back or not, but, you know, the thing that sticks out to me, you know, we're doing three ten, you know, this year, two seventy-five in 2025. I'd like to see the breakout. I'm assuming there's more plans, there's more in that two seventy-five, so the next two years, what you just, I was able to keep up and write down.
You're on professional services.
Yeah, under professional services.
So you'll provide, we'll provide a break.
Yeah, for 2025, the comprehensive plan, that's a large one in there, so, but, yeah, we can break that down.
Okay, thanks.
Anyone else? All right, we will conclude that portion of our program. So for the aldermen, you won't get a police officer dropping off a packet on your door this week. Really brought back some old memories, you know. But note that we will, so the detailed budget schedule will now change because you'll see the ones we didn't cover likely be moving to the next session. For committee chairs, we will probably go from seven to eight, and then we'll go into committee of the whole. Mr. Cap, do you know where we might pick up, just as a heads up? Do you think we'll start just picking up with fire protection and going through what we left off, police and fire?
Police and fire? Yeah, I'll probably go right back to the fire and police.
Okay, good. All right, three minutes after. I think that's enough for tonight. Anything else? Motion to adjourn, please. Alderman Toledo, Second Alderman Brennan, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're adjourned. Thank you.